Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, August 7, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Jim Henry, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd like to start out by reading the public notice. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster Newspaper and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the matters in the agenda, which are PB, application number PB-2023-03, PB-2020-10, and PB-2020-14. Would you please call a roll?
I'll call, absolutely. James Bonanno?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Eric Gallopo?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor John Moore is absent. Daniel Shenameo is absent. Jennifer Satter is absent. Michael Gunin?
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak is absent.
If you have a cellphone or other device, please turn it off for the duration of this meeting, and please stand for a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
I'd like to change the agenda slightly tonight, and I'd like to hear application PB-2022-14 first. This application concerns 900 Madison Avenue. Are there any people here for that application?
If I may, Andrew Carr is from Fox Works Home. We have Den Holt's acquisitions. That matter is on for tonight. I have emailed over to the Board Secretary. We're looking to have this matter carried. There's some more design changes that we have to make. My understanding is that we have an available date on October 2.
That's what I've been led to believe, yes. So can we get a motion to carry this application? I understand you will extend the time as required.
That is correct. That is correct.
Can I get a motion to carry this application to October 10, October 2?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Abstained.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Gunin?
Yes.
Very good. I would assume that without further notice?
That is correct, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then we also have the resolution.
Are there going to be any questions related to the resolution? I know that our professional didn't have a chance to look at them.
I'm good.
Good.
Any questions to propose? Are there any good satisfied with the response?
I think we're good. Okay, your next application is...
We have to do a motion and second to approve the resolution for 1012 Asbury.
Okay. And by the way, the motion we have pre-approved with this resolution to move the application.
Would anyone like to make something?
Second.
Eric and Michael. Okay. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Abstained.
From 1012 Asbury?
1012 Asbury Avenue.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
So James Bonanno, Councilwoman Clayton, Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Gunin?
Yes.
My understanding is that the Tall Brothers' resolution will be on.
407 Lake will be next, August 21st.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay. Application PB-2020-10.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, Steve Goen, representing the applicant. So this is a continuation of this hearing for the VFW property. We've been here twice so far. At the last hearing, there were sort of a laundry list of items that we just needed to correct on the plan. So I'm here with my architect, Dan Condatore. He's going to need to be sworn. He hasn't testified yet. So Dan's going to walk you through just what we highlighted on the plans. And I have Christine Cuffone, who's going to be our professional planner.
If you could just raise your hand.
Yep.
You swear affirm and testing about the gifts of truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Just state your name. It's going to go last for the record, please.
Sure. Daniel Condatore.
And also just got to swear in our professional forward. I'll just sit down a second. You swear affirm and testing about the gift of truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
Good.
Yes. State your answer, please.
Don't know.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, Dan. So I'll let you, you can start with the plans. These have been submitted already, correct? These are part of our recent materials? That's correct. Haven't been marked, but they were submitted as part of the application. Sure. Well, good evening, everybody. I was unfortunately not able to make the last presentation. Had some logistic and airline trouble. So I'm glad to be back here to continue this, the process of this project. We had understanding that there were some questions and clarifications that we need to make to the plan. So I'll walk through the plans, and I have some other photos and things that I can show you to help elaborate even a little bit further. One of the issues that we had originally was we were uncertain on how the power was going to get to the building. We were trying not to put a transformer pad in there, but there's a good chance that we will need one transformer and a pad. So what we did was we designated a spot should we need the pad and the transformer where we're going to put it. So what you're seeing here in the bubble plan, kind of on the front facing Lake Avenue, you see where we're proposing to put the transformer. It's kind of tight site in there, and there's very few places to put this transformer with the clearances and things that we need around it. So based on our coordination with the civil engineer, this is the best location for the pad. So. And then as a part of that, there was a question about meters and where meters would be, would go, and what kind of setup we have, conversations about the alley. So on this building, it's going to be a fully electric building. There's no gas being provided, so we will have no gas meters. What we're going to do is we're going to have one house meter that is going to be on the front facing. So it's a single meter that's going to be on the front face of the building, and we can screen that with some shrubbery and things like that. And then on the second floor, the residential level, you'll see a utility room. So we'll have sub-meters located in that room. So there won't be a bank of meters on the outside of the building. You'll just have that one, one house meter, and then we'll sub-meter it internally. So that was one of the things we wanted to clarify. And then also, you can see just north of the staircase in the hallway area is where we also added some mailboxes for the residents. So those are the changes to the second floor plan. Here on this plan, this is the roof plan. And you're seeing on the roof plan where the elevator shaft comes through. Also, you see those little square boxes are air conditioning units. So these are, you know, typical residential-style condensing units. They're about 48 inches off the rooftop. They're situated well in the center, which we believe won't have any line of sight from the street. Should there be any visibility from the street, we'll obviously screen it appropriately. But we don't see the need to screen it at the moment because they're fairly small units.
I'm sorry, Dan. Did you say they're 48 inches?
Yeah. Yes.
Please speak up, Donna.
Yeah, they'll be about 48 inches.
As 48 inches, it sounds tall to me, that's all.
I mean, with a curve, they're about 36, they're plus or minus depending on the size of them. And then they'll be on a little bit of a curve. So that's going to raise it up a little bit at the end of the day. So I'm being conservative with that. I mean, they could be a little bit lower. Okay, this is the plaque, right? Yep. Here's one of the comments and requests where that we put an historical plaque on the front of the building. So we're just showing the location of that plaque on that existing staircase that's in the front. We place that in the middle. And the other conversation that was had, when we proposed originally, last time we were here, we were showing a cable-style railing on the ramp. Originally, we had walls. We all know we took kind of those walls down on the ramps and the switchbacks. And then we proposed a cable railing. The idea was that it would kind of disappear and highlight the architecture of the building behind it. But we got some feedback from the board to see some other options. So what we're proposing are two options. One is a, on the left is a more of like a standard picket-style railing, so a black aluminum picket-style railing. And then on the right, we're showing a, it's more of like a tube railing with cables intermittent. I have pictures. I know Donna had suggested that to us, and that picture's actually in her report, but I can pull that up. So this is that... This one, we're going to need to mark, Dan, because we haven't, we haven't marked this one. So I'm not exactly sure what we're up to.
Christopher, for architectural plans, I was going to do exhibit A4, but if there's something new, then it would be A5.
Okay, so we'll call this A5.
A5.
A5. So this is something that, you know, Donna suggested as an option for railing on the ramp in her report. And, you know, we're fine with that if the board sees that. Or you have the picture of the, have the picture of a picket. Nope. Is it not in there? Oh, I don't have that picture. Okay. That's fine. But this is, you know, more of a traditional picket-style railing that you see. So those are two options that we're posing on that. We can discuss that, I guess, once we go through the rest of the plans. So any other larger conversation is the wall itself that surrounds the parking screening. So we're providing three options here. The top option is a, the wall being, the existing wall now, from the sidewalk in front on Lake Avenue to the top of the wall is plus or minus 32 inches. On the parking lot side, it varies. So the parking lot's either about one foot lower to six inches lower as it goes across the wall. So the wall's level. There's some sloping in the parking. But generally, along the street and the sidewalk, the existing wall's 32 inches. So the top elevation, what you see here, is leaving that wall as existing height, putting a cap on it, and a new railing. So we'll be adding a total of 42 inches to the top of that. All these are the same height. So at the end of the day, whatever option that you're looking at here, when you're standing on the sidewalk, it's going to be plus or minus 6'8" to the top of it, okay? And then on the, on the parking lot side, it's going to be plus or minus 4 1/2 to 5 feet, depending on where the slope of the parking. So that's consistent throughout. But the options that we're providing are, one is where we leave, we put a cap on it, and we have a decorative guardrail. But this is a little more translucent, not translucent, but has a more open space than normally. So, you know, you'll get some parking car lights through it. It's not going to block all of it, but it's more decorative, and I don't, I don't think it feels as closed. The second option below is the same style guardrail, but instead, we're going to extend the wall itself another two feet and then have a two-foot topper on top of it. Then, again, so some of the smaller cars will be blocked by the masonry part, and then we'll just have the openness at the top. And then on the third one is a little more of a contemporary solid guardrail that doesn't allow a lot of light. So it'll be a four-foot on top of the existing wall, but it would block most of the car lights if a car was parked there. And I have some images to show, so you can get a better look graphically. So that's very similar to what we're proposing. So that's like, that would be like a two-foot top with a cap and then the wall coming down. Right, so that, that's kind of the middle option that I have. We'll call that one A6, Dan? Mm-hmm. Yep. What other ones do I have? This is, you can open it up. So that's more of a, you can see the full, a taller version of that kind of guardrail there on the left. That's probably four or five feet. Where ours is proposed to be four feet. And then one more. I didn't have this one here. So this is obviously a little more abstract than what we're proposing, but that is the panel, right? We would do that in black, and that would go on, on top, if you're able to visualize it horizontal. So those are the three options that we're proposing. But overall, you understand, I guess, the height now of where you would be from walking down the sidewalk. And this will be A7. Yeah, you can go back to the drawings. And then, yeah, you have the renderings. And then we just did a couple renderings from the parking lot, just so you kind of get a sense. So this is, this is the two-foot topper, right? So basically, this would be extending the wall up another two feet and putting a two-foot top on top of it. So just a quick kind of perspective to see from the parking lot side what we would be proposing. And that's... Is it just those two pictures? Because we'll call one, one will be A8. Parking lot rendering one, and then parking lot rendering two? Yep. A9 is parking lot rendering two. So those are, those are the updates that we've made to the plan and the changes to the wall. So we're open for discussion of what you think is best, you know? We provided options, so anything that we have in there, obviously, we would agree to. But just before we get to that, Dan, just a couple of quick points. We have the site plan up here. Look at that exhibit. I know one of the things we talked about, I think it's the other sheet, the one that shows the parking lot, site plan. There we go. So one of the things we talked about the last hearing was that we show which spots would be ED make-ready. And so, Dan, correct, those are the highlighted spots there on the site plan? Yes. Those four gray spots. So we did make that update. And then the other was the streetscape improvements along, on the main VFW building, bike racks and that sort of thing. Yeah. Those are not... Yeah, we have the bicycle racks there on the bottom. So just to point out that we did add those to the site plan as well. And then on the planners' review letter, there was a comment about the streetlight. Yeah, there was a suggestion on the streetlight, and I guess they didn't make it into the plan. But whatever, we would agree to whatever streetlight is proposed by Donna. It's fine. Oh, there. Yeah, so it's on the plan. Okay. Yeah, so, so we did fix the, fix the light for the planners' letter. Okay. So I mean, that's, I think, Dan, that's pretty much the changes that we made since last hearing to address some of those comments. And now, open to the board's comments on sort of those two questions that we posed and any other questions that you might have.
Does anybody in the board like to comment or question concerning the perimeter wall around the parking lot? Fence topping?
I prefer the one without the...
Eric, will you speak into the mic?
I prefer option one.
Just a quick question, if I may.
Sure.
In option two?
Yeah.
You show a wall from the parking lot side. It's approximately 18 inches to two feet. Is that basically what, what, the solid wall? An option two?
Option two, yes. Yeah, yeah. The wall's being extended. So the wall currently on the parking lot side varies, but it's about six inches to a foot above the pavement. And then we're adding two feet on top of that.
Okay. And that wall averages, what, about two and a half feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And with relationship to most cars, I'm not talking about your big pickup trucks or your big SUVs, but normal-sized cars, how high are your headlights?
I mean, they're generally like about, what, two and a half feet off the ground, to 30 inches, in that range.
So that basically, the headlight, in option two, would hit the wall?
Yeah.
And not hit the screening above it?
Yeah, it's not, obviously not every car, right? But yes, generally speaking, it would do a better job of screening the lighting.
And you're talking about, in either event, you're talking about a two-foot fence, for better terminology, above the top of the wall?
Yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, just to kind of, you know, buffer the parking itself, so you're not staring at cars.
But that doesn't really screen anything.
Yeah, not, not a terrible amount, but it does a little, you know, visual screen. You can pull up that picture again if you want, Scott. The one with the topper. That's the photo. Yeah. I mean, that's, what we're showing there is the exact panel that we would be proposing. So you can, you know, you can see behind on the top part, there's like a little structure in the back that, you know, somewhat fades away, but...
I'm just trying to think of what it's going to look like from Lake Avenue. It's going to be a pretty substantial wall.
Six foot eight from the sidewalk. The wall, the brick wall, an option two. Includes, including the panel, everything.
Wall itself is only...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's four foot.
Yes.
So James?
Yes.
If we went with option one? How would that impact the street? Because of the headlights not being blocked like they would do in option two?
It's a residential-only parking lot. It doesn't have, as much turnover as a public parking lot would. I wouldn't be too concerned with the headlights, but obviously, option two is going to have better screening than option one. I think if that's your real concern, you go option two, but I don't think it's going to be a massive issue. There's no homes along Lake Avenue that's going to be shined into. There's some cars, some pedestrians, which is a nuisance, but not something that's detrimental to safety or health.
I, too, would prefer option one to option two because of the height of the wall and how imposing it would look from the street.
I agree. And also, it's not fundamentally different in use than it is now. It's a parking lot, and it's always functioned as a parking lot. We've always had the headlights, and a little bit of screening is good. But making it heavier, bigger, doesn't seem like the right...
The cars on Lake Avenue are parked ahead in anyway, so...
It is what it is. It's a car.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming for a moment that the board opts for option one? Would the, the fence actually have to be four foot? Could you cut it down? Would it be just the fact that it was two and a half feet?
Uh, no, I really, aside from blocking the lights, I prefer, from a street perspective, to block the parking lot as much as we can. So I think that little bit of height, because remember, that parking lot kind of slopes up a little bit. So a visual aesthetic screen from the Lake Ave view, I think the height that we have is pretty much where it needs to be. It's a good spot, 6'8", personally. That's my opinion.
I'm curious, are you set on this particular panel? Is it, is it because it's just common weight? It's a stock available?
Yeah, and it was different. I think it brings some playfulness to it.
I was wondering if there was space for maybe one of the panels could be a custom art piece? You know, like, just one, you know, something to like...
Yeah. Oh, we could do that.
That you would work with the Public Art Commission to commission an artist to do one panel as a cutout, you know, like a...
Yeah, we could do that. All right. Yes, we'll do that.
I don't know. I mean, do we want to specify which one it would be, or is that...
No, I think you...
Doesn't even have to be just one panel.
Yeah. Well, if I, if I can suggest, we do have that Chamford corner? That's right on that face. I think that would be good, because as you're coming in west from Lake, on Lake, that'd be like right, right there for you.
Yeah, I think that, I think anything to make the fence feel like it's adding a little more, we would appreciate that.
Would that panel give the fence a look of a billboard?
It's going to be an art piece commissioned and approved by the Public Art Commission.
I'm just thinking, if you're coming in from, coming in from a main street, you're coming down the, from OSHA Grove, and you're getting to that corner, and you're looking at that corner, would that, would you get that billboard effect or not?
I don't think so, and it's not advertising anything.
I understand that.
So I, I think it could be a nice way of marketing the corner.
Yeah.
Any comments from our planner or engineer concerning this?
I did have some other questions for the architect, but if you guys still want to talk about the...
Oh, well, we have one more option, one option two.
The railing.
Do you mind showing us that picture again, too?
Of the rail, yeah.
And is it, that's the exact railing, like the pipe and...
Yeah.
And do you have a photo of the...
The picket one?
Yeah.
I did not.
That's okay. But you have the elevation?
Yes, yeah.
Well, we have the elevation.
It's more of your traditional picket that you can find.
I have thoughts, but I prefer to somebody else start first.
You got the floor?
This looks, go ahead. I was going to say, this looks heavy to me. And I'm not what I would like to see on that building. I, I think the posts are probably more attractive and better than...
Now, but the original option is this is a horizontal that's being shown in the drawing?
It's just being cables.
See, I just, I prefer the cleanliness of the cables, which is something that's, you know...
Yeah, but that, it's not the cables, it's the railing.
Oh, no, not this one.
Yeah, that is so...
Not this at all.
That's so heavy and...
I think what they had, what they had shown in their rendering is...
That's all cable.
No interest. Do you like this better? I do. I think reducing the visual appearance of the, there's so much of it, too. It's always, so when you layer successive... I agree. I like what was on the rendering from the June meeting better than either of these two options. The more you layer these pickets on top of each other, it's just going to end up looking like a wall.
Yeah, and just for a professional standpoint, and we actually work in, if you remember originally here, when we had a historian come in and speak about architecture and additions and how there should be some contrast. So the cable railing to us is more fitting of an addition to the building than trying to go into more of a traditional rail. So we're happy to go back to that, right? Yeah, yes. We're happy to go back to it.
Any other comments from the board?
So we landed on, just to clarify, so we landed on the railing. We want to go back to the rendering from the June meeting. And on the fence, there's a consensus around option one.
Well, let's, let's hear what our professionals have to say before we make our final judgment.
Okay.
Again, my, my questions aren't about the railing or the...
No comments about the railing or the wall?
No, but those are all, those are just up to you guys, which you preferred. We don't have a position either way.
Yeah, from an engineering standpoint, there's, I mean, the option one would provide some dimension. That leg there would be perfect, obviously, but I don't, I don't see a huge issue if it is a parking lot now and there's no, there's no home on the other side of the street.
Well, hopefully, they wouldn't leave their lights on when they pull into the parking space on that, along Lake Avenue. But so the general consensus is that the board wants to go with option number one?
Yes. Yeah. I'll say, I prefer option two, but between option two and option one is so close that my opinion is not strong on this one. So option one, it happens.
You know, I like option two, except for the fact that it's such a high-blank wall. And I, I hear what you're saying. I tend to agree with you, but by the same token, I don't think option one is that, that much worse.
Agreed.
With the modification that you're going to get a custom panel on the corner?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
At least.
So the only thing I wanted to do is get on the record about the windows in the existing part of the building. There's some, you know, inconsistent notes in the plans.
Okay.
So... Obviously, there aren't any existing windows.
Before we get into that, just, let's finish off with the railing. The issue of the railing on the, in front of the Bond Street side. As I understand it, the board is interested in the railing that's shown in the rendering of, I guess it was last June?
Yeah, the cable railing, yes.
And that would be this rendering. Is that the one?
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay. And everybody is in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Donna.
No problem. So, yeah, so the plans say to keep and match the existing building, the existing windows, and there aren't any...
Oh, yes, yeah.
And I think, I think maybe at the first meeting, there was some, some testimony about the, you know, what the windows would be. Let's just close out with...
Okay.
Because we changed the, you know, the third floor, so...
Yeah, so the windows are going to be double-hung windows. The divided lights will match the original window, the divided lights. All windows are going into existing openings, so there's, we're not modifying openings in the existing building. They're just, you know, being replaced, and we're proposing the windows to be black.
Black frames.
Black frames, yeah.
Doug, any questions you have concerning the windows or that?
No, I think I'm good on the windows.
The board, any comments or questions on the windows? Go ahead, Donna, you're up again.
So the only other question I have does pertain to lighting, but... So the only other question I have does pertain to lighting, but maybe more a question for the engineer?
Oh, we can, we can ask it, we'll see, Dan might be able to answer it, maybe.
Okay, so in my report, I talk about how, you know, they might need to do some shielding or some of the light trespass and glare. Seventeen and eighteen? So we have some, we have some spillage in the right of way that actually went up from the last design. Again, that's probably because this fixture has a different, slightly different light pattern than previous. And I think there's just something inconsequential in the calculation on illumination level, so again, I don't know if you can see through our green.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if it's just a matter of providing a shielding, I think we're open to do that if it's necessary, but the actual data on the plan, I don't.
What was the standard we needed to get down to, was it that point three, Donna?
Well, you're not supposed to have anything.
Zero?
Off the site, so I think it's point one. Yeah.
Well, why do we say that, see if there's more questions for, and then we'll bring them up after Dan's done.
Okay, so then I'm the architecture test. I'm good with your architecture.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Board have any other sort of questions?
You had mentioned the transformer pad.
Yes.
Any proposed screening around that transformer?
Oh, um, I don't believe at the moment we are showing screening, just due to the clearances around the pad, it's kinda difficult. I mean, if we can, we would, for sure, because we don't wanna see it either.
Well, I certainly think it would be much better aesthetically if you could screen that transformer pad, kind of transformer itself.
JCP and L typically requires three feet clear around it.
Yeah.
I mean, if they do it, they're at risk for JCP and L ripping it out.
If you look at the transformer that's up at the next block.
Yep.
This could be screened with some shrubbery or something. I don't know what the requirement is, the way of distance.
Yeah, it all depends on the final amperage and everything else, you know, with the final clearances will be around it. So we will work with the power company, and if we're able to squeeze some, some shrubbery around it, we would, definitely, we wanna do it if we can.
Well, I would think that would be very, very much preferable if it could be done.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's a possibility to just move the pad back to give you a little more room, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is something that we coordinated with them, I mean, at this point, this is where we believe the only place we could fit it with the proper clearances, adjacency to the building itself. So we're doing the best we can.
According to your diagram here, it certainly looks like it has to be pushed back a few, few more feet to get some shrubbery around it.
Again, it, obviously we wanna do the best we can to screen it or hide it, so.
I want to better understand what.
Say it again?
I wanna understand better, where, what do you?
If that, it appears that the transformer is in the southwest corner of the property near that driveway.
Right.
So if it's pushed a little bit to the north, you may be able to get some plantings in front of it to screen it.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Mr. Kennedy address that also when he comes up, but the answer is, we're gonna screen it. After, once we go through with the power company and determine where it's gonna be and what's gonna be there, we're gonna screen it.
Yeah, and we do have some.
We don't want it sitting on the road, open.
Yeah.
So we'll do whatever we can, you know, within JCP and L's part.
And we do have some existing underground structures there.
But Jim, Jim will speak to that as well.
Can you just show on the screen there again where the gas meters are?
No, no gas.
Three seconds. Oh, got it. Take a look here.
There's no, there's no gas service at all?
Oh.
Fully electric.
Got it.
Any other comments or questions? Let's open this up to the public to ask any questions of this witness, to which he's just testified. Do you have a motion open to the public?
Motion.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anybody from the public is free to go to the mic and ask this witness any questions concerning the testimony that he has just provided. Seeing nobody going to the mic, we close, public? Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Excellent, so I'll call Jim Kennedy, our engineer. And Jim was already sworn at the first hearing on this application.
Yes, I have, thank you. Can I just stand and point at the picture? It's a lot easier to describe than it's hard.
It's okay, by me. So Jim, you had the questions, the lighting and the screening?
So this is the transformer pad.
Where is he swaying him in?
He's already sworn, sorry.
There's a underground water at somewhere in the wall, so it looks like he can slide his back about five feet and landscape the front. We'll touch base again with JCP and L, they're interested in keeping their primary as short as possible, but I think they'd allow us to just scoot it back three to five feet. The clearances are ten to the back, three to the front, so that's why it's sort of located where it is, but pushing it back, screening the front is in everyone's interest, so we're gonna do that. And can we just put a standing plan? So Donna's correct in the lighting, when we switch the lighting fixture to the gooseneck, the distribution is completely different. But we're talking about spillage in Bond Street, and if you've been to Bond Street at night, there's not a lot of overflow of lighting onto the sidewalks. And we have that situation where we have the two barrier-free stalls backing out into the sidewalk, so we did light the sidewalk because of that reason. So we do have spillage of about a foot candle, one point two, point five, in that area. And now we're sort of done with the purpose, to light the back, that sidewalk behind the cars. There is spillage from the fixtures on the other side, but it's less, point one, point five, point four, point one. Again, that, that's in the right of way, it's in the sidewalk area as well as the pavement. And I think that, I don't think that's a bad thing in this case, in this particular case, where we have a street that does not have a lot of lighting, and we have the potential for pedestrian and vehicular conflict. So that was the idea, we know that we're gonna have tenants parking here, we know that they're gonna be walking across the street, so the intent is to make it safe. It happens that this gooseneck fixture does distribute light into the right of way, but again, I don't think that's a bad thing in this particular instance. So we would request that waiver for the absolute zero spillage past the property. Now, obviously, if this were a residential property, that zero spillage becomes much more important, but because it's a right of way and these properties are sort of interconnected, that's, that's the idea there. So we'd request that waiver.
Thank you, I have nothing else for Jim, but he is available for questions.
Before you, before you sit down, let's just give our professionals a chance to comment and question if we.
I'm satisfied with that, I have, my next question would be about operation, so I don't know if that's gonna be your, your client or somebody else, but we didn't, I don't recall touching on, like, how do we prevent non-residents from parking in the parking lot? Is there a mechanism, is there a process, is there, how are we doing that?
Well, let's, let's finish, again, let's finish up with Jim.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know who's addressing that, but that's, that's what happened.
We can give you that answer, sure.
I have a, I have a question for the engineer. When he gets back.
Mr. Kennedy, we have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You have on the parking lot, you've got a few lights on the building to the east, correct?
Yes, but they're being removed.
I'm sorry?
They're being removed.
Okay, I didn't get that from.
So, okay, so the lighting, we're using this type fixture, this gooseneck fixture.
Right.
We have a proposed fixture in the middle, Bond Street Island. We have a proposed fixture against the northerly property land between the stalls.
Right, got it.
We have another fixture at the, what's this, the southeastally corner. And this is the isocandle illumination from that one, isocandle illumination from the middle bond, and the isocandle illumination from the northerly fixture.
Okay.
So with three new fixtures, we're covering the entirety of the parking lot without the use.
And those fixtures on that building are being removed?
Yeah, we don't even know, I mean, I don't know how they're powered, I don't even know how they got there. I think the VFW had a handshake deal and probably put it up, which is great, but this is a different, different, different moment, a different use, different will.
I was gonna ask you how, if you answered the question, you don't know how, who they, who they belong to and how they operate.
All I mean, what we find is VFWs usually work, you know, well with their neighbors.
Yeah, right, so is your intent that those lights are gonna be deactivated?
Yeah, there's no purpose of those, no sense in spending any more money trying to get fixed them, or we'll just use the compliant Asbury fixtures to make it look right.
Doug, how about?
I'm good.
Okay.
Jim, did you get the answer to the parking question, controlling the parking?
So I think it was actually testified before that there is some sort of gate control that will be utilized at the entrances to this location, probably with, you know, one of those NFTs that actually will drive up the gate openers. So that's, that's the idea, I think.
RFID's?
RFID, uh.
An NFT.
That's, that's always the question.
I was like, wow, these are expensive.
That's high tech.
I bet, I bet, I bet.
The market for these keys.
I wish to do the metal fence that we're gonna customize, that could be an NFT.
Yeah, that's good.
So, so there'll be some kind of, uh, robot arm in the, in the island?
Yeah, and we'll have the, the security consultant, actually, when they work out the security, we'll have, we'll make sure that we have a security plan and a cop from that manufacturer.
That only be on the in, or would be on both sides?
Well, I think we'd have to control both sides, right, because if you don't have one in the out, then that will sort of become the in.
Yeah. It will also count the number of cars, right, because you wouldn't have somebody, if it's full, you wouldn't have somebody entering.
So if they have that, that tech and that's their assignment, you know? What we find actually in areas like Asbury or Seabright, when you number the spaces, it doesn't matter if anyone really has a space that's numbered, but if there's a number in a space, people generally won't park in a numbered space. It's, it's a wonderful thing, even if you don't assign the numbers, it's just space twenty-two, people will not park it, because they think twenty-two's gonna call them up and say, that's your, my space. And then you have private interest in that stall. So I think the idea would likely be to do some sort of security, but yes, counting, if this were a parking garage, we'd certainly add that tech to not open the gate. But, you know, when you have tenants, they don't wanna know that there are spaces in the balance, right? Yeah, that tech is needed.
And you said at this moment, you don't know whether those spaces are going to be assigned?
No, not yet, until I think the, the ownership gets an idea of how many people actually have cars, because this is relatively walkable, you know, very walkable, it's a mass transit.
Then they'll probably have two cars.
Or three, right. But also the availability, availability of mass transit, availability of, it's a very walkable route, so availability of even car sharing. I think the ownership wants that flexibility to manage the parking lots the best of what the tenants believe.
And the security gate would be set back into the right of way line, say a foot or two?
Well, yeah, it has to be so that the car could actually start making the turn and not block anyone. So Bond, it's one way, they start making the left-hand turn in, it's gonna have to be set back.
Yes.
Here, so that you can actually come off the street a little bit and get the tech to work.
Would you be able to show those on plan, project board, if, like, as far as residential lines?
I mean, we'll have to get the security, yes, yes, we can certainly.
My only concern with the in gate is just that first space on the middle, if it's, you know, gonna be blocking it or in the way of the arms like that or not.
So, so this stall, I.
Yeah, that's my only concern, so seeing it would be helpful as well.
Less the arms.
Got it.
If you can put a wheel stop there, so it's just coming from that side.
Maybe, yeah, just by way of picturing my mind or how I'm seeing it, seeing it would be much more helpful, us just to know exactly where it's gonna be, because it feels like it's gonna block it, but I can't tell from here.
I mean, that's really like the stall I want, so I can pull it in, pull away through.
I'm, I'm with you, I can see that.
And when it's snowing, that's gonna, I'm taking that stall, so that's, I don't wanna live out front, because that would be.
I wouldn't.
Into space twenty-two.
Well, I like your idea of numbering the spaces, whether they're assigned or not, I think, I think it's a good idea to number them.
Okay.
I tend to agree with you that people don't park in numbered spaces. Board have any further questions or engineer?
Alright, thank you.
I'm gonna open the public. Yeah, it's open to the public.
Yes, okay, motion up in the, to the public for questions of last witness?
Motion. Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing nobody going to the mic, motion to close?
Motion. Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, Christine Cofone, our professional planner.
I'm Tyler. You swear firm, that's what I'm about to give you.
Yes, I do. Certainly, it's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven seven, zero one. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner, I've been testifying as such for approximately twenty-eight years in the state of New Jersey. I have been qualified in the city, it's been a minute, maybe even a decade and a half since I've been here, but I have testified before well over four hundred and fifty planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, so I'm out a lot at night. My licenses are current and valid, I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, and I also sit as a court-appointed affordable housing special master.
Thank you. Good enough?
Yes.
Thank you. So this is a relatively straightforward application from a planning point of view, at least anyway. This site, as you know, is located in the CBD, Commercial Business District, Central Business District redevelopment area, and we need very little variance relief. The variance relief that we do require relates to the minimum ground floor use. The city's ordinance requires that a minimum of thirty-five percent of the ground level of the building be devoted to principal commercial uses, and further, that the ground floor frontages shall be occupied by commercial uses and lobbies for residential uses. So we don't comply with that, we can't comply with that, because our flood hazard permit will not allow us to do that. So it's not as if there is a workout or a redesign that we could do and come back to you with another plan to demonstrate compliance, it's a zero-sum game, we can't do it. So statutorily, that helps me from a planning point of view, because that allows us to rely on the C1 statutory criteria. Now, there are two mechanisms that this board can grant C variances, and that's the C1 hardship criteria, or the C2 flexible C, where if no hardship exists, the board can certainly still grant variances, or you do it on a regular basis, those would be the flexible C. But this to me, if I were teaching a class on a textbook hardship case, I would use this as an example, because when there is no way to comply, and a governing agency, state agency, has issued you a permit that would preclude you from doing exactly what the ordinance requires, that to me sets up as a classic C1 hardship. So in my opinion, we do meet the C1 statutory criteria for the grant of those two C1, C variances. In addition, to the extent that we require a variance for the wall height, Ms. Miller, I thought that was a waiver for the height of the wall?
Yeah, that's a design exception.
It's a design exception, that's what I thought as well, so in addition to the waiver, the standards for the grants, and to strike that, in addition to the variances, there are sixteen or so waivers associated with this, and they're design exceptions. And the standard of review for a waiver is such that if a literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance isn't practical, then the, the board can certainly grant the waivers. And you heard a lot of testimony about the waivers from other witnesses, from the engineer and from the architect, but in my opinion, the waivers are justifiable under the fact that not only is this an adaptive reuse, but it's an adaptive reuse of a historic structure. So that, combined with the existing conditions on the property, are related, for example, the driveway, right? We are, we're seeking one of our, one of our variant or waivers is for the driveway distance to the property line, that's an existing condition. Another one of our waivers is for the separation of the driveways, again, an existing condition. We need about six variants or waivers related to the parking lot, the parking lot buffer, the parking lot shade trees, the parking lot landscape area, the number of off-street parking spaces per RSIS, while we do comply with the city's ordinance, we don't comply with RSIS. So, but we are constrained by the shape and size of that parking lot, and I think when you look at that and you look at the waiver relief associated with it, I think the board can conclude that the relief requested is the minimum relief required to both develop the site and still meet the intent of the ordinance. So I do think that the relief is justifiable, and then there's also a number of waivers that are required for the architecture. We need some relief relative to the lack of harmonious colors, to the new work being compatible with the historic architectural fixtures, for the penthouse setback, as well as for the sliding, the sliding doors, the CBD ordinance precludes that. So again, this is a situation where when you balance, because that's what we do as planners, right? You as the board planners, you're professionals, me as the applicant's planner, we're trying to balance and we're trying to weigh to get to a point that none of the relief rises to the level of a substantial detriment, and we still meet the intent of the ordinance and the zone plan. So in addition to the goals that were cited in Ms. Miller's report on page twenty-one of. So in addition to the goals that were cited in Ms. Miller's report on page 21 of her report, I believe it's on page 21 of all iterations of her report, including the most recent, which was issued on August 3rd, in addition to those goals, there are a number of other goals in the city's master plan, which was last reexamined in 2017. One of those on page 39 is to continue to work with developers to implement redevelopment plans. And then still another goal is to encourage redevelopment in appropriate locations in a manner that is compatible with the organic or historic development pattern of the city. So when you look at these things and you balance what this applicant has done, I think that the applicant has certainly met its burden of proof with delivering to the city a plan, your planner and your professional have been unbelievably helpful at giving us direction, right? This is our third time here, we went to a TRC after our first meeting, so we've gotten some, some great direction, and I think each time we've come back with a plan that made modifications to make it a stronger plan with better design guidelines, and I think the board is, can certainly grant the variance relief under the C1 statutory criteria, and the relief that's required with respect to the waivers is, in fact, due to literal enforcement or practical difficulties in dealing with the adaptive reuse of a historic structure that is surrounded by either road frontage or alleys. All of those present practical difficulties for this applicant in developing the site in accordance with the vision of the redevelopment plan. And I think the applicant has really done a yeoman's job working together with your professionals to come back to the city's planning board with an appropriate plan.
Thank you, nothing further for Ms. Cofone, if the board has any questions?
One of the questions raised by the CCH report, as I recall, was the question of screening of the rooftop units, and the architect testified that he thought that they would be backed far enough so that they would not be visible from the street. I think the report indicated that they would be visible from the south and from the east, your report, as I recall. Can you address that, or should that have been addressed by the architect?
I think probably that, it is for Henry, it is for... I think that that's probably better directed to the architect as to the screening.
The screening of the rooftop units.
Yes.
So after careful deliberation just now, we'll just agree to screen them in accordance with Ms. Miller's recommendation, so that's fine.
I didn't actually recommend anything, but...
Well, either way, we'll, we'll screen them.
You know, if, if, as part of the final design of the actual size of those units, we'll take a first look.
Okay, fair enough, and then we'll, and then we'll include appropriate screening.
Well, my comment was going to be that they're going to be, they'll be very visible from the people who've on that west end of the lake, even though it is a different municipality.
Understood, we can certainly work with your professionals to come up with an adequate screening plan.
Okay, very good. Anything else? How about any further questions or comments from the board concerning testimony? Shall we open it up to the public?
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody from the public would like to ask this witness a question? Please take the mic. Seeing none, how about a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Any opposed?
Thank you. So I have no further witnesses. The board has heard our presentation, and I would hope the board votes for an approval. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board concerning any testimony tonight or prior testimony? How about from our professionals?
I would say I think everything's been addressed so far in our letter.
Okay, and everything been addressed, satisfactory to you?
Yes, sir.
How about a motion to, see if anybody wants to make a comment from the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody who would like to make a comment concerning this application? Seeing none, how about a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, here we are. We have a motion to approve this application.
Before we get to that, I do think that, you know, we should just commend the applicant for the care that has gone into this application to make a project that is fitting of the restorative use of the building, something that complies with the idea that it doesn't have to mitigate, it can fit it and still be a little bit different. And the willingness to work with the board on getting to a point where, you know, I think we want to see more housing downtown, and this is it. So, this is, I think, a great project, it does deserve our commendation.
Agreed. I would, I would like to say one other thing, the roof line on the new addition is flat and uninteresting. Can you do anything about that? Edge of the roof on the south side of the new addition? I guess it should carry all the way around the new addition, before the floor that I'm talking about.
We finished testing it. Right.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a square edge, and it just doesn't look very interesting, that's my comment on it.
I don't, I don't think we want the roof line to compete with the roof line of the original building.
No, I agree with you. But this is in stark contrast.
I believe there was testimony that the Department of Interior standards suggest that the addition to the building should contrast with stylistic choices on the base building, and that way, I think the flat roof line does establish the addition as distinctly different from the rest of the building.
And further on, it does say that it should pick up the architectural features of surrounding buildings and stuff. I hear you on that.
No, 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 that's, that's our design guidelines, not the Interior Secretary's guidelines. That's, there's two different things, and they do compete, but they have complied with the Secretary of Interior's standards by doing the design the way they've done it.
And I believe there are elements of the addition that do pick up the pilasters and the rhythm of the building below to create that vertical relationship, while still establishing that the addition is something entirely separate.
Any further comments on the board? And our professionals? Chris, could you give us a rundown of the conditions that might be imposed if, you know, when we vote for approval or denial?
So, for the most part, the applicant's complied with everything as it relates to any kind of conditions that are set by the board, so they are seeking improvements that lead to the C1 variances and the design waivers as prescribed to by the planner. They've agreed to work with our professionals, after the fact, of course, any other outstanding items, so as it relates to any additional additions, I don't wish any of those to be overlooked.
Right, and we're going with the option one fence and the...
The railing.
Cable railing. The railing, cable railing, former railing, and they will work with us on the...
They're going to shift the transformer and screen it.
Screen the transformer and the panel, the custom panel.
The custom panel.
They will seek approval.
That also leads to the board.
Right.
The screening of the rooftop units?
If necessary.
As needed, yep.
Any other items? Can we get a motion to accept the application subject to the conditions that have been articulated? A motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Eric Gallobo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Gunin?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it very much.
Two for two.
Could we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Aye.
Aye.
That was it.
Thank you.